Work through issues with the city. We ask thee to help us to be mindful of the needs of the city and the citizens that live here. We thank thee for all of the support that they give to us and we ask thee to bless us this night that we will remember the make the decisions that need to be made to best serve them. We thank thee for all of our staff and especially our public safety and ask thee to continue to bless them that they will be able to be protected as they do their jobs to protect us. And we say these things in the thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Counselor Hawes. We'll now move on to public comment. Seeing no members of the public, there's no letters or anything, right, Ms. Maragoni? Okay, we'll move on to presentations and reports. For the mayor's report, I had just one item. Last night at WACOG, the YCC came in, they have a new director there, and she is asking the cities for money again. And they talked about how Ogden's their, you know, they're obviously their biggest client. Ogden gives them thirty-five thousand dollars, I think. But she had numbers for the cities and how much they use. And I think Riverdale was about the third highest. There was Ogden, then there was Roy. We were right about the same as North Ogden for the number of people that that they were serving from our city. It was unfortunate because she was able to bring up that Riverdale had had two domestic violence homicides just recently, which
They don't use the YCC with the homicide?
Yeah, that's true, but they probably had.
It's the closest homicides they use.
Yeah. And, and anyway, it was unfortunate that she was able to to mention that because I think that reflects a little bit unfairly on us. But anyway, one thing that was really interesting is we were, I think maybe the second highest usage because our, our citizens appear to go back for lots of visits. They had like the number treated and the number of visits that they had. And ours had a really high number of like re- repeat visits. So anyway, just kind of interesting, just letting you know that they are looking for money again. Obviously, I feel like that's a county type service and the county should be funding that, but
Talking about the YCC?
Yeah, they do provide a very valuable service. And I know, I know they're a very, very valuable resource to our community. But so just know that they, she's interested in coming and talking to you about that. City Council assignment reports. Anybody have anything to report from their various assignments? Okay. We'll move on to consent items. Number one, consideration of approved meeting minutes from the May twentieth, twenty twenty-five council work session and council meeting. Any changes or corrections to those minutes? Seeing none, a motion to approve would be in order?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. We'll move on to action items. Number one, public hearing. This is to receive and consider public comments regarding the following. Number one, amending the Riverdale City budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Number two, proposed amendments to the Riverdale City Code one dash seven dash two salaries of the city council and mayor, and one dash seven F dash six salary of the justice court judge. And the third item is adopting the Riverdale City budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Mr. Carden, do you have anything to say about this?
I don't.
Okay. The council have anything comments on this? We're gonna open a public hearing. Seeing none, we'd need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Do you think we need a poll? Or can we just all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, the public hearing is now open. Seeing no members of the public, we needed a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
With a motion and a second, all in favor. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
All right, any opposed? That motion is unanimous. Okay, the public hearing is now closed. We have a second public hearing to receive and consider public comments regarding proposed amendments to executive municipal officer compensation schedules. Mr. Carden, anything for this?
No, I don't.
Okay. Anything from the council? We would need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, the public hearing is now open. Seeing no comments, we would need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? The public hearing is now closed. Thank you. We'll move on to item number three, A, motion to untable and reapprove an expired site plan for the Riverside Flats Apartments. Mr. Brooks or Cooper?
Mr. Cooper's here. I don't know that I have anything more to add, but if you have questions
We have to untable it first before you can tell us anything?
Right, right.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to untable the reapproval of the expired site plan for Riverside Flat Apartments.
Okay, we have a motion.
Do we have to untable it to table it again?
Yeah, you don't, you can't discuss if it's on table.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? All right, that item is now on the table and we can, no, it's off the table. No, it's on the table. Yes, we can discuss it. Mr. Brooks?
I don't know if you have any further questions on that, Mr. Cooper. Could give you more detail, but basically, we just didn't have enough time to get that wrapped up in a month. But it is moving forward and we're seeing progress on it. So we think we'll have a solution soon. Just it's not ready tonight. And you had set this for a time certain, so we had to bring it back.
For Richard Reed approving or approving what was already approved, you know, and expired?
Yeah.
What's not ready?
I'll have him just give you more detail on that.
So basically, based on the discussion we had in the previous meeting where you tabled it to this meeting, there were a number of comments that we took back related to parking and related to approving things that were previously approved, but now have a different code application to them. And so we're looking at all of our options in terms of what would make the most sense, not only for this project, but for this situation where we might have a reapproval in the future and to make it easier on the council and on the staff. So that's just taking a bit more time. We're working with the developer. We're looking at the code. We're looking at some parking options. We kind of took all, all of your comments and, and put it, put it to a discussion and we're working on, on those things.
Any other questions for Mr. Cooper? Counsel Arnold?
Motion to re-table is stated within the packet on the Riverside Flats Apartments.
We have a motion to table. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay. That item is now tabled again. Thank you. With no specified date, that must be brought back. Thank you. Move on to item number four, consideration of resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighteen, awarding a bid to Ormond Construction for the twenty twenty-five stormwater improvement project on five seventy-five West and fifty-four hundred South in an amount not to exceed four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-five cents. Mr. Douglas?
Thank you, Mayor. So one good thing that we've seen with bids lately is we are getting a lot of bids again. So it was in the past, we'd been down to one or two. The last few, we've been over ten. So that's encouraging price-wise that we're getting the numbers back. I think there's not as much going on. The contractors are getting a little more hungry. We have worked with Ormond before. They do very good work as far as the quality of work. We did have a little trouble closing out the bid at the end with some change orders and dollar amounts. So I wanted you to be aware of that. With that being said, me and Steve called a special meeting that we usually don't do with a contractor. We usually do the bid opening and then the bid clarification and move on. We brought them in and asked them specific questions on that. And the leadership's changed in that company. The older gentleman have either retired or kind of taken a backseat role. They have assured us that there won't be them kind of changes, but I just, I wanted to make sure that you was aware of that. Like their quality of work, it was forty-four hundred and the trenches haven't settled. It's been excellent work. There was just some questions there. They put a lot of blame back on a former representative of engineering firms and a lot of that went back to him. He's not here. I don't know. And I wasn't involved in the project at that time. Like I took the project on almost at the very end, landed retired. And so I really wasn't involved with as much either. So I don't know. But as far as pricing, the pricing was good on this project. There's one thing that could come up on the project that's a little different. So we're gonna have them do the storm drain lines, put it all in. And then we was also reconstructing the road at the same time. So the test holes we've done up there, the road base seems to be good, but that could change on them older roads. Like it could change in ten feet. We might not have road base. So there is a chance that we may need to go back and put road base under it. If that cost was higher than what we have in the bid, then we'd have to come back to you and talk about that. But that's the only real change that I'm aware of up there. And then if you have any questions, I'll try and answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Douglas?
I could give you a little more detail if you want some on that previous one, because I actually handled that. That tells you how, how old I am or how young Sean is. But it was a little bit weird because we thought this thing was done. And then at the end of it, we got hit with this pile of change orders that we knew nothing about. And so we objected to that and they ended up filing a lawsuit on us. And so we went back and forth for a while. We ended up getting it settled and everything worked out fine. But we did make it real clear, both with them and with our engineer, that if there are any change orders discussed in any projects, that Sean has to be a part of that. And that was part of the problem that didn't happen before is at least how they explained. And I think that might be true because we were surprised. It was a blindside to us. But that's not going to happen now. They know it and the engineer knows it. And so unless Sean or, or Norm or somebody's involved in it, those change orders have to run through the city. They can't be deciding that behind our backs. So I think we'll be okay on it. And they seemed pretty sincere about it. And they were forthright. They knew that this was not a usual process, but it went well. So I think we'll be okay on it.
I don't think either one of you have told these guys how, how long it's been since you worked with them.
I think it was about twelve years ago.
Yeah.
And so they purposely haven't bid with us because they knew we was upset. They felt like that there's been a long enough time now that we could work together again. That, like I said, the two main players, one of them's totally retired, the other one's more doing back office stuff. And I, the quality of the work, like they've done excellent work, you know, that's not the problem. It was the way the change orders was handled. And I think we have processes in place now that that won't happen. And hopefully they're upfront like they said they would be if there's anything that comes up. So
Counsel Stevens?
Okay, I'm, I'm not following, and I don't understand the contracting, but I know you have to put it out on the government website for bids. Okay. So the change orders, I'm not following when that comes into play.
So what happens on a change order? So you, you do your bid documents, you do all your plans for the project. We get out in the field and something changes. So we go up on this job, this road was built thirty years ago. And all of a sudden, we run into a pipe that we didn't know was there and the grade can't stay the same on the pipes we're laying. So we have to change something. So we would consider that a change order. And so they have an opportunity to give us a different pricing at that time for work that wasn't in the original bid. And so that's what a change order is, is when there's a change in the original bid contract.
Okay, so was the meeting that you say you're, you called with these folks, was that just to clear the air from before or is that?
Correct. Yes. Just we wanted to make sure that we was all on the same page and that we wasn't, we didn't want that process again. We want to make sure that if there is a change order, it's dealt with upfront. We know what the cost is. It doesn't come at the end of the project.
State law requires us to take the lowest responsible bidder. That's one of those legal terms. I don't know that anybody ever defines it, but where they were the lowest bidder, then we had to sit down and kind of evaluate this to see if they're the most responsible bidder. And that's the purpose of our meeting. We had to make sure that that wasn't going to happen again. So I, I think we're okay. Because then you run into that dilemma that we could get sued if we didn't go with them and we didn't have a basis for it or reason for it. Multiple change orders could qualify, but you know, where it's been so long and Sean checked with other cities, other cities like them and they haven't had issues with them and stuff. So I'm, I'm, I think we're fine. I'm not, not that worried about it now.
Twelve years ago, that was more of a one-off.
And, and if it happened the way they said, he said every change order they submitted was a mandate from our, our engineer. And we just didn't know about them, the city. And that could have happened, unfortunately. But now we have a different engineer. They have different people. And by us telling them no change orders happen without Sean knowing about this, I think we're relatively safe and moving forward.
Takes me a minute to figure out what the process is.
Oh, for sure.
And I appreciate you explaining the history.
Whatever we can explain, I mean, that's what we want to do is keep you informed as well as we can because that's, that's what we need to do. So
And having watched this play out, it's, it is nice to have all the experience we have. These guys are not rookies as they deal with these people. And they, they, you know, Sean and Steve do always, and all our department has, but they're, they're experienced and they're watching out for the city and they're not gonna waste money or let us get, get, you know, taken advantage of them. So I appreciate that. In the meeting you guys had, I know it was a little bit stressful trying to decide whether we would go with them or not. But I think you, you got it on the table and said we're not gonna do that again. So anyway, we appreciate all you're doing in the background, making sure that things go smoothly, you know? I think the residents get a lot of benefit. They don't realize what's going on in the, on the back end of these things. Anyway, any other questions? Counsel Arnold?
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighteen, awarding a bid to Ormond Construction as stated within the packet in the amount not to exceed four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars and eighty-five cents.
Very good. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Ms. Maragoni, please poll the council.
Counsel Hanson?
Yes.
Counsel Arnold?
Yes.
Counsel Richter?
Yes.
Counsel Hawes?
Yes.
Counsel Stevens?
Yes. All right, that passes unanimously.
Thank you. One, one other thing I didn't mention, this is up on the east bench. And a lot of times our residents up there are like, well, we never have anything done up there. So this is a fairly large project. And so I think they'll, it'll be noticeable for them. They'll get rid of some waterways and stormwater collection will be better. And it's just something that'll be nice for them up there. So
Thank you.
I appreciate the efforts to repair that relationship too. If there was a, a difficult relationship in the past, that's, that's a good thing. So thanks.
Yeah, they're obviously do good work. So we want them on our list. All right, moving on to item number five, review of the Riverdale City budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Mr. Carden?
So in the packet, um, there's a summary of budget changes. It's the attachment A.
Is your mic on?
Nope, sorry.
Is everybody's mic on?
I'll start over. So in the packet, there's an attachment A. It's the summary of changes for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. This is all the adjustments that we've made since we talked to you on May sixth about the budget. And if you want to wait, I guess it looks like Michelle's pulling it up. So I'll wait just a second and then I'll run through them all with you. So right here. So you can see, here's the account and the title, the original budget amount, the pro, the proposed adjustment, and then the ending amount. So the first adjustment, Brandon and Steve would like to add sixty-five thousand dollars to our professional services for a general, for a city general plan review, just to make sure that things are coming out of the legislature so hard and fast. They wanted, excuse me, get some additional help to try and get that up to speed faster. So we're not so far behind.
Cody, I had a quick question on that. Is, is that the right term, general plan? Or is it more for our code? Is this for the code update that you guys are working on?
Yeah, I think wasn't, it was more the code.
Because we just did the general plan like last year. I think it was the plan or the code, yeah.
I think it's the code that you guys are working on, right?
Yeah.
I was confused by that because I was thinking we just did our general plan.
Yeah, I think you're right. I think you're right.
And so this is actually like for Title Tan and that stuff.
Right, yes.
We're trying to shore our code.
Yep.
Because Brandon had indicated that he was having trouble keeping up with getting it updated as fast as the legislature's changing.
Yep.
So it's actually for our code.
Yep.
Right?
Yep. So we, they wanted some additional money to get somebody external to help with that. So we added that money. The next one is the changes to the business license fees and the flock cameras for thirty thousand. We increased both of those and added a line item for flock cameras. Some of our chief Hennessy got looking at some of our AEDs in the buildings and they're old and the batteries are getting towards the end of their life. So he thought we could get a grant. Plus we need to replace some of those. So we added twenty-five thousand dollars in grants and equipment so that we could replace those. We weren't sure if the fire station and community center roofs were going to be done by the end of the fiscal year, although they are working on the community center. We were over there today. And from what Sean told me, it sounds like that one will be done by the end of the fiscal year. But we wanted to roll those over just in case we didn't get them all the way done or if we get some big rainstorm and it gets postponed. So that's the hundred and sixty thousand dollars there. Some of Sean's projects that he has bid for the Class C, the five hundred thousand there, they don't think it'll be done by the end of the fiscal year, but he wants to be able to bid another project. So we rolled over that five hundred thousand of Class C road money. With the roundabout on ten fifty, we have got, if you remember, we were able to increase our grant to nine hundred thousand. So we bumped that up by the four hundred thousand. We also bumped up using some of the local option funds by four hundred thousand and the current estimates just under the one point seven. So we adjusted those so that we have enough money in the budget for that for next year. So that's those. Let's see, in the water fund, same thing as Class C roads. Sean's bid those projects, but they're not going to be done until the summer or late fall or early fall. And so we wanted to roll over that six hundred thousand so that he could keep working on those. With the stormwater fee adjustment, we adjusted that and we'll talk more about that in the other item with fee schedule. And so we have a hundred and thirteen thousand dollar adjustment there in the stormwater fund. Also with the capital projects in the stormwater fund, same thing. He wanted to roll those over because it's all, I believe it's all part of the same big project. Then in Fund sixty-four with, which is the IT fund, we needed to move a couple of things around so that we have the police and fire laptops in there just right. So I adjusted those and adjusted the budget accordingly by, and then kind of cleaned up. I had an in contribution from retained earnings and an increase in retained earnings. So I just cleaned that up. So those are all the adjustments to the budget since the, the meeting on May sixth. And like I mentioned in the work session, the only other adjustment we should have between now and the final adoption on the seventeenth is for the certified tax rate. I looked right before this meeting because I know that Davis County is getting real close on theirs. And they didn't have any of the information in the certified tax rate website. They only had our taxable value at a hundred and seventy-two million. And last year is one point eight or one point two billion. And so like they still have a lot of stuff that they've got to get done the next few days, but we should have that next week. I was hoping that they'd have a draft in there so I could kind of tell you where it was going to be, but they don't have it that far yet. So that's all the changes we have to the proposed budget for next year. And then like I mentioned earlier, would just plan on adopting that at the next meeting, once we have this certified tax rate.
So that's super fast because we like Mr. Carden to go fast because we've had this for a few days to look at it. And hopefully everything makes sense. But at the same time, we don't ever want you to feel like because he goes so fast, you can't ask if something doesn't make sense to you in your eyes, you know? So make sure that we're looking at this and all the numbers make good sense and you know what he's talking about.
Yeah, I, I do follow it, but it would be nice if you could note which ones, I mean, you know, obviously, because you know the numbers. If I'd worked with these numbers as long as you have, I would know them too. But which ones are revenue and which ones are expense?
Oh, okay.
Know that. Even color coding, maybe?
So in general, and I can try and do something different. If it's in the thirty-sixes, like ten thirty-six, usually that's a revenue account. And anything above that usually is an expenditure. But yeah, I can do something different next year.
I, I have the same thing with, when I deal with people at my work, it's like, oh, I, I know the numbers backwards and forwards and I don't have to think about it even because it's just natural to me. So and, and I, I did go back and, you know, I, I flipped back and forth between this document and the actual budget to, to see which ones were which. But it would be nice to be able to quickly identify. It is nice that you put them together rather than all of the revenues up here and then all of the expenditures down there, that you do pair them up so that we know this is the, this is the revenue, this is the expense that's changing like that. I like that part. Just if it was a little bit easier to identify that quickly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Counsel Arnold?
Is there a plan for the roundabout on ten fifty? Do we know what it's going to look like? We are going.
Come on up. We do actually have people to watch. I know several people that watch each meeting, so.
I know I have three employees that watch about every meeting too.
Yeah. And you can't hear, you can't hear what they're saying out there.
We, so we have, we're, we're what the state calls sixty percent plan in hand. We will have that meeting with the state this month. So once that is done, I could bring that to you. We, I hate to bring it until the state has a chance to keep, they keep changing stuff on us. But once we get through that sixty percent meeting, I think it's scheduled for around the eighteenth, nineteenth of this month, I could actually put that and bring it to you or just email it to you so everybody could look at it. But it's really close. And if you've seen the previous one, it's pretty close to what it was, but
There's really two, the aesthetics of what it's going to look like is going to affect my life a lot.
So most everything's stamped except for the center and the center does not have a design in it yet. And that's where I think we'll ask you guys to weigh in on. The state's not interested in putting anything in there or maintaining it. So if you, as a council and mayor, want something in there and how you want that to look, that would be in it, that would be on top of the number that Cody showed tonight. But the state's not interested in really doing anything in there. They don't. And it's in the middle of the road. I don't think they would prevent us from doing something. So that's something that we can discuss and look at. But right now, the center has nothing. All the islands will be stamped just because of the maintenance and the, you know, it's just hard to work on them, but the islands themselves are stamped.
Do we have electrical?
We can have.
Okay. Or water, but that would be our expense for the water and
So we have water, we, we have water lines three ways out of that intersection. So it's easy for us to grab water and throw water in there. Like if we wanted to do some kind of irrigation or drip in there. Lighting, we can probably, we have a, that Weber Basin Vault that's right there on the corner. We could probably actually grab off of that power meter because we own that. And we could probably grab power from there and run a conduit out. At least if nothing else, run conduit for future to make sure we had the ability to run it.
I was wondering, it'd be kind of cool if we had like a, a really nice big light in the middle of that thing or something.
So I doubt they'll do a big light like that, like uplight they might do, but because of the glare and the directions that everybody's going, I doubt they'd want a big downlight in there. But we could do some uplighting like we've done in the other ones for features or something. That's something to be thinking about though. If you do want something nicer in there, be thinking about what you want to do and what kind of expense you want to put there. Because I don't think they'll care, but they're not interested in participating in it.
Do our other roundabouts, is there a way for you to know money-wise or man-hour-wise how much it takes to maintain those with the plants and the other stuff?
They've been actually fairly good. Like we spent, we spent quite a bit of time putting our annuals in every year. But other than that, like, well, unlike the seven hundred one, we lost the flowers that was in there this year. So we just replanted them today. But they're pretty low key. A lot of it's spraying. This year, we had to put new mulch in the fancy one over here with the sculptures. We remulched it. But time-wise, it's probably not much different than grass, probably easier than grass.
Thank you. I appreciate the council having the forethought to make sure there's power and water in there. I will say that I came down Ritter. I don't obviously spend a ton of time on that side. And I was shocked at how busy I, I couldn't get onto ten fifty like I wanted to because there was just people going all different directions. It was kind of chaotic. So
During the school.
And it wasn't even school, no. And I just couldn't believe I was like, and people don't know what to do. Like people are stopped at all the intersections. Like I, I think I underestimated the need over there. It's, it's gotten really busy. And that's not even during the school. I know that's really, really messy. I've heard lots of comments. But anyway, I'm excited to have it done. It's going to be a huge benefit for that whole side over there. So
We made that same request. Didn't we get that in on the one up by America First too? So we had some power? Right. But originally, they didn't have that designed to have power. But the thought was just get it in there. If we wanted to put Christmas decorations or whatever, at least you have it there other than having to try and tunnel under or whatever. So
Yeah.
Both of those should be pretty nice.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Okay, so that was just an explanation of the budget. You guys are going to adopt that in two weeks. All right, number six, consideration of ordinance nine nine-three, approved, proposed amendments to the Riverdale City Code one dash seven dash two salaries of the city council and mayor. Mr. Carden?
Thank you, Mayor. So just as we talked earlier and a couple of weeks ago, this is just the proposed increase for the mayor and council based upon the other increases. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions or comments for Mr. Carden?
Represent?
Oh, Counsel Hanson, sorry.
Oh, sorry. Um, I was just curious because I don't think we've done a lot of Um, I was just curious because I don't think we've done a lot of increases other than the one for the technology last time. Do we know or does Stacy said how far off we are on the market rate?
She, I, I don't think she looks at it.
Okay.
Um, I think, yeah, I don't think she pulls it unless like you've asked. And so I'm not exactly sure. And I think it just depends from what I know. Most city councils don't adjust it very often. And so it usually is like a little more stagnant.
Counselor Stevens.
To answer the question, I, last few days I went to. Stacy helped me with the uh, the website where you look up people's salaries.
Transparent.
Trans, yes, transparent Utah. Okay, and I looked up, and basically you have to pull up like Roy City. And look up a couple of council members in South Ogden. And so I, I did that for a number of them. Roy City, uh, South Weber. I'm sorry, South Ogden, Clearfield and. And Roy, we're very comparable. We're slightly higher on the uh wages. And then they, they break it out, wages and benefits, but we're significantly higher on benefits. From all the, from those three, Clearfield, Roy and South Ogden. And then if you get into other small, like South Weber, Washington Terrace. We make, I mean, they make a fraction of what we make. I mean, Hooper has the same population we have. They get pennies on the dollar for what we make. Uh, what we are paid. Um, but you know, North Ogden's very, is, is a little bit under pleasant view. I mean, we're very comparable and I didn't look at um Ogden and Leighton because they're in a different category, Ogden City. But we're very, very comparable, if, if not just a little higher. And then when you factor in the total expense of the employer, meaning the uh, the benefits. We're, we're considerably more than a contemporary.
Counselor Arnold.
I think, um, so I too looked at many of the cities and we're, we're just unique. I mean, Riverdale's, nobody goes with Riverdale. It's, it's what we deal with the legislature. You can look at Hooper and. Hooper isn't Riverdale, you know, I mean, South Weber isn't Riverdale, South Ogden isn't Riverdale. But I, I don't think anybody here uh does it for the money. I think we all, we all do it for service. And the one thing that I, so I'm not in favor of an increase, but the thing that bothers me about not having an increase. Is I would like to lure people in to want to run, to want to be a part of this. And if, and if it's paid, it's service. It, it's really hard to look at the employees and say no. You know, no, we're not going to do that big of an increase in salaries or no, you can't have cool cameras and stuff like that. And you know, it, it's hard to say no when you're in service. And so, you know, if you're being paid to do something and it's like, you know what? Rather than being a hawk on how we're spending money, you know, if we go. I, I'm stuck, it was a couple of years ago, but the, the increase for the payroll was eight percent on the, for the employees. And if we go to twenty thirty at eight percent, Stacy, this would be up your alley that for the next five, six years. Eight percent, eight percent, eight percent, eight percent is like fifty-six percent or something like that increase. And um, so as far as, and I'm cool saving money, you know, on my side of it, on, on anybody's side of it. So I, I would be in favor of no increase for the city council. But I do feel bad that somebody down the line, because we do percentages. You know, we, we don't bump it up this year. That means it's not pumped up next year and, you know, for that fifty-six percent or what. I, I just threw a number out there, Stacy. If I'm right, that's pretty cool. But the, but to go, you know, hey, we're not going to raise the rates for us. It, it hurts down the line, so, but, but I could care less. And I'm, I'm pretty sure Braden's got a spiel that he's not taking a raise and.
I'm not, it's up to you guys. You put me on the spot, Counselor.
Rather than, rather than, you know, I mean, belaboring, belaboring the point, you know, I'm, I'm fine with it. I just feel bad that it, down the line, it's going to be, uh, it hurts future council members percentage-wise, but.
Counselor Stevens.
I, I'm not, I don't see it quite that way.
You don't agree with me?
I've never, ever, ever heard of somebody saying, golly, I'd like to run, but it just doesn't pay enough. I've never heard of that. Um. Everybody who gets involved, it's a labor of love. It's a.
Just make the motion. Just make the motion. Just say, I agree. That's what I agree with. Make the motion.
I will say.
I'd have the floor.
One at a time, Counselor Stevens.
I was interrupted. The point of it is, it's, it's symbolic. I mean, a couple of years ago, we raised the taxes and then the council. And I was the only no vote, Ray gave themselves a raise. It's, it's optics. You, you have to be careful of the image and the optics of what you're doing. Now, it was, it was reversed. The, the, the raise was, was brought back up and was stopped. But, but it's, it's the, all the things of, it, it's. I think it's about five percent, five and a half percent this year. But it's, it's optics. And so that said, yeah, I'm, I'm not in favor of it.
Okay, Counselor Arnold, did you have anything else?
No, he stopped, so we're good.
Okay, Counselor Hanson.
I just wanted to say that I, my, that was my main concern was in the future, like Alan was saying that. I hate to get too far down the line where then there needs to be a bump that's more, that looks bad for a future council to have to take it. But, but I also agree that I think all of us are here because we want to be here and we didn't really look up the. Hey, before we signed up to do it, so I, I'm fine with it. I think the thirty dollars for the technology thing is, is pretty still competitive. So I'm not really worried about that this year, I don't think, as long as we keep an eye on that. If the city council is paying for their own computer or laptop or whatever device they're using, then I think that's fine. To move forward without a increase.
Any other comments? Seeing no other comments, a motion would be in order, Counselor Arnold.
Um, there is no. How do we make a motion for a no raise?
Just that, make that your motion?
So in ordinance nine ninety-three, I would propose that there is no increase for city council members or the mayor.
Yeah, please.
He gets, we want to double the mayor's salary.
Let's not do that. Thank you.
So no raise for the city council this year for the mayor.
Okay.
And. As not stated within the pack.
And did we have a second or a comment down there? Second? Okay, Counselor Stevens on the second. Any discussion on that motion?
My comment was just that we are probably just voting to not approve ordinance nine nine-three.
Well, we have to have an ordinance to say no.
Do we?
Because it's not zero, we're saying zero, right?
That's how I would do it, yeah.
So you'll, you'll adjust the wording of the.
Right, we'll have to because the one that's in the packet does have that listed in there.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to adjust the wording and motion a second or find of that. Thank you, Counselor Hanson, for that clarification. And any other comments on that motion? Ms. Maragoni, please poll the council.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Stevens?
Yes.
Counselor Hoss?
No. No, you didn't say anything.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Oh, there, move my hand.
Okay, that.
Yes.
Okay, that passed with four in favor and one opposed.
I would just, if I could mention, I don't remember if it was last year or two years ago, because we run into this all the time. And so we put language in our code that specifically says that you have that right to refuse all of it or even a portion of it. So that language is in there, even if you did pass it, it's not that you have to take it. But just as an FYI and just following up with some of the things that Alan said. I mean, there is a method to our madness and we do look at other cities and comparisons and stuff like that for that. And, and that state website, um, you gotta be a little bit careful just because of how they report it and what they report and stuff. So those things can be skewed like, like a lot of our salaries. But what Alan says about you, Riverdale being unique is we run into this all the time and you just can't compare Riverdale. Um, there's no city in the nation that I know of, of ten thousand people that would have full-time police and full-time fire. That right there tells you something. And, and Chief Warren's been working on some stuff for me. On our, our twenty thirty committee about, uh, you know, just how Riverdale is affected. And a lot of people don't realize, we have the third highest police call volume in the county. So that tells you something. Ten thousand people and we just fall right behind Ogden and Roy. We're the third highest. So we are unique in everything we do and, and even with our own people. Um, you won't find another city that does multiple jobs like our people do. And so, you know, I know people attack me and they attack a number of us, but I don't really feel guilty for any of that. Because a lot of us do multiple jobs. And if we were getting paid like other cities, they, they separate those positions. I mean, we're trying to save the city money and uh, so they can say what they want. But you guys get a good bang for your buck from our employees, so hats off to our people. And I think we do a good job with what we have to work with, but you, Riverdale is unique. It's hard to compare us with anybody, quite honestly.
Okay, and I, I second that. I think uh, the things that you guys are expected to do and attend um are sometimes more. Because of the type of city we have. Um, there's a lot of events that other cities might not have. And so, anyway, I appreciate the council and all they do and uh, I think they are uh, very well deserving of any pay that they get. And uh, just appreciate that. So, all right, let's move on. This one's a little easier. Consideration of ordinance nine ninety-four, approving the proposed amendments to the Riverdale City Code one dash seven F dash six. Salary of the justice court judge, Mr. Carden.
Thank you, Mayor. So as we talked in the pre-work session, this is, the increase here is the new minimum for our judge. Based upon the AOC's calculation. Um, and then as we talked earlier, it's just required to be done by ordinance per the AOC.
Counselor Stevens.
I, it sticks in my craw when the legislature says, okay, you have to do this. Or somebody says, you know, and it's, it's just, and, and grates on me. And so it's just, and I voted no contrarian uh, in the past. And it's just, what, what happened if we, if the council's? I mean, he's a good guy and he's a good, I'm sure he's, it's, it's, you know, that's the going rate and all. We're not going to, you know, can we get Roy Bean to come in and say, I don't know. But anyway, I, that's just a, uh, I'm just venting.
We, we, this one's a little unique this year. We usually are within the range that they send us. This was a little bit of a surprise, kind of caught us off guard and we had to go a little bit higher than what we normally do, but.
There were some new calculations that they came up with, I think, from the AOC.
Yeah, I think everybody got hit. They're trying to get them more money and it's on our backs, so.
Counselor Hoss, last year's was significant.
It was. Last year's was really big.
Like thirty percent or something. It was big. So this year, the fact that it's just barely above what um, we would have proposed. Based on our city's method, I don't think that that's a big deal.
Any other comments? Counselor Arnold.
Move to approve ordinance nine ninety-four as stated within the packet.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? Ms. Maragoni, please poll the council.
Counselor Hoss?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Hanson?
Yes.
Counselor Richter?
Yes.
Counselor Stevens?
Yes. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Move on to item number eight, review of the fraud risk discussion uh, for submission to the state auditor's office, Mr. Carden.
Thank you, Mayor. So as stated in the packet, we're just required to send this to you each year so you can see where I. Our score hasn't changed from last year. You can see that we're rated um, very low according to how the state does. Or how the auditor's office does this. Um, so we're just required to show you each year so that you kind of know where we're at. And then it does get reported in our um, our financial report, our fraud risk based upon that and the state report. So.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Carden?
Thanks for your efforts on this. I appreciate all you do on this.
Looks good, yep. It's hard for me to believe that any city has problems when I look at what they're supposed to be doing. I mean, I guess they're just not doing those things, but you know, cities definitely have problems.
Yeah, and a lot of times it comes from being really small.
Yeah.
And having too much access. And we struggle a little bit with that because we, we don't have a lot of redundancy as Steve was talking. But we try hard and try to break stuff up as much as we can.
Any other comments? All right, um, there's no action required on this one, so thank you for that presentation. Number nine, consideration of resolution twenty twenty-five dash nineteen, amending the Riverdale City budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, Mr. Carden.
Thank you, Mayor. So as we talked in the work session, we're just making one little change to the general fund with um, community services. And then we're increasing two expenditure line items for property purchases that ended up a little higher, a little different than we were anticipating. Um, but we will get money back on the one and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Carden? Seeing none, a motion would be in order to Counselor Arnold.
Move to approve a resolution twenty twenty-five dash nineteen as stated within the packet.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion now to second, I need discussion on that motion. Ms. Maragoni, will please poll the council.
Counselor Richter?
Yes.
Counselor Arnold?
Yes.
Counselor Stevens?
Yes.
Counselor Hoss?
Yes.
Counselor Hanson?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you. Item number ten, consideration of resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty to approve the twenty twenty-five slash twenty twenty-six consolidated fee schedule, Mr. Carden.
Thank you, Mayor. So um, as we talked in the pre-work session, I'll just roll in over these really quick. So we're proposing adding the two point seven five percent processing fee for credit and debit transactions on all transactions. Other than utilities and possibly ambulance. In the meantime, in between meetings or my agenda items, I went back and looked at our bank statement and it looks like since. And I can't see the transaction detail, but there was two transactions that came through that were, was over like two hundred dollars. One of them was for five hundred dollars and one of them was for two thousand dollars. Um, so in four months, most of the payments were somewhere between twenty-seven dollars and two hundred dollars. That were coming through for the ambulance billing on their credit cards, just for your information. Um, so we've got that. The other changes are the utilities that we talked about. So the water, the normal water increase that we proposed, the sewer garbage, and then the stormwater increase of the fifty cents based upon that calculation. Um, we also talked to you about the shut-off fees, just going to the flat fifty-dollar fee. There is also, uh, it's on page ten, but a surcharge after hours fee. We're bumping that up from, I believe, twenty-five to seventy-five. So that'd just be if there was a situation where they had to come in to do that. And then also those fire hydrant fees that we talked about going from the fifty to a hundred and then the highest here are the commercial water rate. Um, and then just the changes to the business licenses. And there will be some change, some more fee changes coming in the fall. I know um, Chief Hennessy's working on a few things and Brandon's working on a few things. So we will have some more um, consolidated fee schedule changes for you in the future, but these were just the ones that were ready with the budget. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counselor Arnold.
So just curious, why not utilities? When we're, so you're, you're saying the two point seven five is on everything but utilities and possibly.
So there's rules that we can't charge. We get a discounted like merchant fee associated with utility accounts. And so if we charge a percentage-based fee on that, it like violates our agreement with the merchants. So we can charge a per transactional fee such as like the two dollars for the ambulance. But historically, what we've kind of built in, it kind of like Counselor Rich, Rich, Rick or Roots talking, sorry. That we just build it into the rates is what we've tried to do in theory. And so that's why we are staying away from the utilities is we just felt like it was easier. Um, and we're just, the main ones we are concerned about were those big ones. Um, and the um, also the um, court fines and stuff. Because we can't really dictate what those fine amounts are per se. Some of that is done by the AOC. Uh, so we're trying to recapture those amounts.
Counselor Hanson.
Um, on the Gold Cross contract, which I haven't looked at Riverdale's recently. I know sometimes they provide that service for free and they just keep a portion of the bill. Are they taking, I, how is the split? What's the split?
So how it works, I believe here is they actually charge us uh, based upon their billings.
Okay.
And so they send us a bill each month and that's how we pay. Um, so they kind of don't care how we collect because they do it based upon their billings if I remember correctly.
But do we collect for them or do they collect for us?
They collect for us. So they do, or so we send them our info, like the fire departments transport somebody. And um, Kristen sends the information to them and then they bill them on our behalf.
And did they eat the cost of the merchant fee or do?
We pay it.
They pay that, they pass it over to?
Yeah, because the merchant accounts actually set up in our name that they utilize. And so we pay that too.
I'm just having a little bit more trouble feeling good about the $2 after you just said how much those fees are, because that's a lot.
Yeah, on those couple it is, you know, on like a lot of the other transactions.
Did you say on average though, it was like 27?
No, oh, no, I'm just saying how much money came through. So we had two deposits from the credit card associated, because it comes through a different merchant, so I can see it. So there was two deposits in those four months that was, there was one for 5,000 and one for 2,000.
Thousand?
Or sorry, 2,500.
That wasn't the merchant fee, that was just?
That's the bill.
Okay.
And then the other bills were between $27 and $200. From looking at them. So like if you're running your percentages.
I misunderstood. I thought you were saying that we got hit with a huge merchant fee, but the average was 27 per transaction.
It looks like most time the merchant fee is like 30 to 50 dollars.
Okay.
A month.
Total, for the whole month.
For just that merchant.
Okay.
So.
And I, I think where people have so many of those flex, you know, flex cards and HSAs, I think, can they even pay that fee with the HSA?
Yeah, they should be able to.
That's interesting that it's okay to use that to cover the fee too, like with all the restrictions, yeah.
HSA, if you are the HSA holder
Yeah.
or a dependent of the HSA, they can use it.
Right. But I just, with all the restrictions, I'm surprised that the fee can be paid for with an HSA. But I guess they just have to do that.
It rolls.
Yeah.
Thanks. That makes a lot more sense.
Yeah, sorry, I was confusing.
$2 is great.
And I don't know, do you have any other questions on any of those?
Uh, let's see, Counsel Arnold, I think yours was first. Counsel Richter.
No, I appreciate the clarification on those, on those terms. That makes me feel better about that, because we talked about in the, in the pre-meeting there. And, and likewise, we're moving forward on the assumption that the vendors have said, yep, we can implement these convenience fees without problems. If there was some kind of an implementation problem, we'd, we'd be back talking about it.
Correct. Yep. And our plan was, like I said, we tried to hit it like even as close as possible. We'll reevaluate it over the year and see how it goes and we'll definitely report back. And if we need to tweak it a little bit or if we're like, oh, this stinks, like I hate these personally. But like more and more, like we're paying more and more money all the time out in these. And so we just felt like it was time that we kind of needed to do something.
I did have just one more comment and I, I want to be kind of careful because I don't want to stifle your creativity or your, your desire to help the residents. And not that you're doing that now, but just some things that I've kind of learned, especially with that utility shut off thing that we did. I think I played kind of a big role in that. I was a big proponent of, wow, 50 bucks is too much. We should charge them 25 on the first time and then only 50 for the next one. And Counsel Hawes, you know, last year with our water rates from where we moved them back till they didn't go into effect till October 1st. The impact that that has on our, on our city is unbelievable sometimes. Like when I was talking to our utility clerk and she was like, well, I got a spreadsheet and I gotta say, okay, is this your first time or your second time on the shut off? Oh, you're 13 months, so it's technically a first time or no, it's, yeah. And just, just tracking these things. And then when, when Mr. Carden explained that a lot of times it's the same people over and over and it really is just the same. And so our, our thoughts come from a good, a good place. We want to help the residents and make it easy on them. But sometimes, like with that water increase last year, Angie had people that were on equal pay. And that just completely messed up their thing because they'd used a bunch during the, during the summer. And then, you know, the increase happened in October, but it was just, it was almost impossible for her to do it. And then they saw like two increases. And so just, just be mindful of that sometimes. Like I said, I don't want to stifle your, your desire to help the residents because I have that same one. But sometimes the impacts on our poor billing department can be pretty, pretty crazy.
I was gonna say, our shut off fees are pretty low compared to other places I've been a utility billing manager at. And we usually charge, if they turn their water back on, we charge them more than once every time we go out and shut it off at a place I worked at before, so.
And I had a long discussion.
If we don't do that, then we're super nice.
Yeah, we had a long discussion. $50 just barely covers all the noticing that we do, the, to get our guy out there, to turn it off, to turn it back on. Angie does a great job, goes above and beyond our code even and, and will call them like at the last minute, just try to help Sean. Yeah, come on up for just a second, just, just so they can understand something that, what goes into that.
So that's our worst day of the month, the shut off day. Like we dread that day like no other. For one, I worry about the guys' safety with the way things are out there. You go out and shut somebody's water off, how are they going to react? Angie takes all kinds of flack on it. But so then they get a notice on their billing saying their pass due. So we go through that process. That'll be on the next month. Then 10 days before the shut off, we actually send out a billing, a mailer that goes out to each individual one. It tells them what their pass due amount is. It tells them when they have to be paid for. It also says on there, if you're having financial difficulty, please call us. We will make arrangements with you. All you need to do is call us and we'll, as long as you call us before the shut off day, we'll make an arrangement with you. We'll work through it. We'll make a payment plan, whatever we have to. We don't want to shut them off. That's, that's the last thing. Usually we do shut offs on Tuesday and that's 10 days after that. But before that, so on Friday, she'll go through and everybody that has a number with us or an email with us that's still on the list, she'll go through and send them another notice. Then on the Monday before the Tuesday that we shut off, she does that one more time. So we've, we've spent, I can't tell you how many hours we spend on this and the $50 barely covers just shut off day and our drive time out to shut them off. And then we go back and turn them back on. So we're just barely breaking even on that. But I feel like we go way above and beyond because if they'll register that number or address with it, if they have it on their bill or if they put it on the express bill pay, she's doing two extra notices besides the mailer we send out. And like we don't turn people down for arrangements. Like all they, all we ask them to do is just call us and say, we'd rather make an arrangements than drive out there and shut them off and drive back out and turn them on. So if you have a resident, we're also going to put some stuff in the newsletter again, talking about express bill pay, equal pay and all that. Our shut offs are way down though. Like we've been in the, I think we've been averaging 13 to 20. And in the past, a lot of times we've been 30 to 40, but a lot of it's because of how hard she works them and how much extra effort we put into it. But there's no reason for anybody to get shut off or charge 50 bucks because they can make a minute and a half phone call and we'd have an arrangement and they'd be good to go. So I think it's above fair. And it's going to really simplify what we do as far as the billing and just making it so it's not as much work every month. So I know it's hard when it's residents, so. But we are trying to really help them and make sure they don't get shut off. And I don't think it's hard to make a phone call. Like if you're worried about the $50, just make a two minute phone call. Like it literally is two minutes, so.
I think she started at like 50 or 60 this month and was down to like 11 by shut off day, so.
On the Friday before, we're averaging, so the Friday before shut offs, we're averaging 40 to 65 people that we're sending that additional notice to. And then like I say, by this Tuesday, we was down to, I think, 13. So we work them down fairly well.
And one other funny thing is a couple of them are businesses, which I just can't even believe.
At least to shut off car wash every month.
Of all the businesses, so anyway. To really think about how much time and energy we are doing, just babysitting people with their water bills is unbelievable. I mean, that, those resources could be used so much more efficiently. So anyway, if you get feedback on that, that's, I think you guys are headed in the right direction. Any other comments? Counsel Arnold.
I have a question about a possible motion as we're talking about the fee schedule. And we're saying excluding utilities and possibly ambulance service. So if we have a motion on, we make the motion as it's within the packet, how do we identify the ambulance service to eliminate that?
So if you notice on each, the top of each section on the packet, I highlighted where I put the processing fee is. And it's not on.
On the public work, she has processing fee of 2.75% shall be applied to all transactions made by credit card, creditor debit card within the city except as provided in subsection A. And A says the processing fee shall not apply to payments for utility services. So that's, that is actually going on in the code. So I don't think that we have to specify that. That's already in the code that we're creating.
Did it, did it not, was it not on the planning and zoning or did I, was it missing on that?
It's not because we're going to do that later.
Okay.
There was enough changes that we didn't want to do it all one time.
We're just stated within the packet and we're good.
And the ambulance doesn't have it right now in the packet.
Well, yeah, I left the $2 on there.
Yeah, we're fine. Okay. Counsel Arnold.
I move to approve resolution 2025-20 as stated within the packet.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Ms. Mary Goney, please poll the council.
Counsel Stevens?
Yes.
Counsel Richter?
Yes.
Counsel Hanson?
Yes.
Counsel Hawes?
Yes.
Counsel Arnold?
Yes.
All right, that passes. Counsel Hawes?
Just one question that I had on the fee schedule. On the drought thing, it gives color coding. Where does that color coding get, come from?
I think the color coding came from Weber Basin and the severity of the drought.
I think that's a statewide kind of code, but we can double check on that. Okay, because I, I just looked up and the, the governor issued a emergency drought declaration in April for 17 counties, southern, not us.
Okay.
But, and it didn't have anything to do with specifying any, any particular level of drought.
It seemed like it was in that Weber basin document that they provided us, I think.
That's where we brought that off of was off of theirs. And that's, that's where we would get our drought determinations from at Weber Basin. Yeah, I, I went out to their website and I searched, but you know how searching does. I couldn't find anything.
I can find it. I'll send it to you. I still have it saved somewhere.
And I probably have it too, if you want us to find it from previous.
Good question. So that did pass unanimously. All right, we'll move on to comments. Any comments from the city council for this meeting? Counsel Hanson was up first.
I was just so sad that I missed the playground opening because I was out of town, but I saw the pictures and it has been crazy over there. And I did go a few days later with, with some of my nieces and nephews and we played for a while. And the kids are so excited and even the adults, to be honest, I saw a lot of dads climbing up to push their tiny babies down that giant tower slide that shouldn't have been climbing up there. But I, I am just so grateful for all the work that you guys put into it. Because I know you studied it out for so long to make sure that we were getting the best product and using our budget as efficiently as possible. And especially on the efforts on the ADA, things that were included on the playground that I think it's just amazing. It's, that's the best playground, of course, we've ever had in my lifetime. And it was just really fun to see everybody up there. And I know they might be trashing it a little bit, but I did see a couple of parents try to pick up some garbage. But I, I appreciate it and I'm sorry for the extra work because it's probably drawn in huge crowds every day. But thanks to you guys for all that work you did.
Mayor, could I piggyback on that just a little bit? I, I, I just want to give kudos to the people who really jumped on it. 24 hours before that was set to go, it was not going to go. And because of our people, Michelle was spearheading this thing as far as the party part of it. And Sean's work crew was just phenomenal. That wouldn't have happened without these, with those guys involved. I mean, it was a team effort. There was a lot of people involved. And it was phenomenal. Michelle had gotten soupies, zeppies, zeppies to come up. I think he was anticipating like one elementary class and he had over 600 people and stayed even longer than that. And we're going to work with him a little bit because he initially said, I'll just come up and do it for free. I don't think he had a clue what was going to happen, nor did we, to be honest with you. And so we'll end up paying him a little bit of money to help cover some of his costs and stuff. But that just came together like nothing I've ever seen and it was very well received and it was a lot of fun. So it was pretty cool. I got in some trouble trying to get some drone footage up there and I'm waiting for the FFA, FAA coming in to get me. I had no idea. They didn't like you flying a drone near an airport like that. They got a little worked up over that thing, so.
Was that before or after the Ukraine?
Oh, it was the day before the opening of that, but I didn't even know that they could take over my drone and just force it down, but they did. They didn't like that at all. So I was just trying to get some footage for our social media kind of stuff. Didn't even think about it. And they jumped all over that one, but it worked out nice and our people were just, once again, I know I say that all the time, but they're just so good. And that was good. That was a lot of fun.
Counsel Hawes?
I know that everyone received the invitation to the 20th anniversary of the senior center. I just wanted to remind everybody July the 11th and please RSVP if you can go. It would be a great opportunity to celebrate with them. I unfortunately can be out of town, so.
It's the day of the flood too.
Oh, was it the day of the flood, huh? Okay. Counsel Arnold.
Um, Michelle, do you have like any counts or anything like that? Anybody not looking for names or anything of people that have signed up to run for city council?
Yes, and they're all already on the website with declarations and their.
I got it.
So I have four.
Okay. Cool.
And she updates it on the spot.
Wow. While you're doing zeppies?
I do so many things at once.
Anybody else any comments? Okay, we'll move on to comments from the city staff. Chief, come on up.
Well, been sitting here pondering and you guys earn every penny that you guys get paid. And you don't get recognized for the good work that you do. I mean, from the mayor coming out and observing protests and getting calls and emails from each of you guys. You guys bear a lot of burden outside of these meetings that people probably don't understand. And you guys do a lot of things that other cities don't do, like we, we talked about before. And so I've been bothered that you guys didn't take the race, just to be honest with you, because you deserve it. And I know you guys don't do, don't do it for the money. I know that. But I think I just need to go on the record and say how grateful I am to work for you guys. And that the city, the residents in the city should be grateful as well, because there's a lot of things that you guys do behind the scenes, whether it's block parties, it's grand openings of new businesses, it's residents that have issues that go directly to you. You know, I get emails or conversations from you guys, phone calls from the mayor on a daily basis almost. And so you deserve every penny of it. I, I think you should reconsider, but that's just me. But I just want to go on the record. I, I know I can speak on behalf of all the employees. So, thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Any other comments from the staff? Okay. All right, I, I have just a couple. And so I know we've been working on the trail and it's looking great. I saw some lines on it today. Do we have a, like an estimated time that it's going to reopen? Tonight, okay.
Weather's cooled off a little bit on us yesterday until the asphalt didn't dry as fast, so we couldn't paint yesterday.
Okay.
And so we had to paint today. It's, as far as a lot of people's concerned, it's been open all day, but.
Yeah, I, I saw the ribbon was down on Parker and I, I just want to be able to tell people yes or no. Okay.
When they get here in the morning, they should be fine, so.
Yeah, you don't realize the use. I saw Counsel Richter riding his bike out on Riverdale Road on the way here.
We cut him off yesterday morning.
And it's funny because there's residents walking around my neighborhood and they're like, come on, mayor, what's the deal with the trail? We have to walk on the streets. And it's just, it's funny. You don't realize.
In your neighborhood yesterday morning when we was closing and opening gates for them.
Yeah.
Three ladies jumping down there, where are we supposed to go?
Yeah, we do have sidewalks, like, yeah, they just don't know what to do with themselves.
I did see Counsel Richter, like we had him cut off right over there first thing yesterday morning. I'm like, man, I hope he's seen the post on the busy road or something like. I don't know what's happening.
Yeah. So anyway, well, we do appreciate that and I, I have gotten good feedback. They're excited that we're maintaining the trail, so.
Looks great.
And it's going to be beautiful from what I've seen, so.
And the lines are new on that side. I think the people like the lines.
Yeah.
And so we added lines on that. We have them this way, but we didn't have them down there.
That'll be helpful. And this is just for the council to think about a little bit. I asked some of my fellow mayors about what they do. We're getting some feedback on the speeds on the trail, those people on those e-bikes. But, you know, and it is a thing, like I did a lot of reading about it. There's all sorts of suggestions. Everything from closing it to e-bikes to limiting which kind the classes that can do it. Obviously, we don't want to close it to e-bikes if we can avoid it. West Haven was the only one that had done anything. I think they put up some speed limit signs and I said, well, do you enforce it? And they didn't have a good answer to that. And I, I don't know if we want to go that route, if you put something up and then don't enforce it, but just, just think about it. Like, I don't know what we can do. It might be just, just some education even, but it's, it's something we're hearing about quite a bit. And then one last thing, I've been working with Mr. Taylor back there and he created a really cool flyer for me to send to our three elected officials to invite them to Old Glory Day. So we're going to try and get them. He's, he's authorized free entry to them, to any of the events that cost money. So we're hoping to get them in the parade. We're hoping we can get them running in our 5K. Jill Colford speaking at the sunrise. Um, Jill Colford speaking at the sunrise service and uh, but we'd love to have them at the movie park or anything that they want to come to. So if you see them, please go up and, you know, say hi. We're gonna try and announce if they're there and, and if they're okay with it, draw a little attention to them. And just appreciate them being there and stuff, but we're trying to build those relationships all the time with them. So um, we are gonna try and invite them to our whole Old Glory Day celebration, so hopefully they will see them out there, so. And that's all I have, so uh, with that, we need a motion to adjourn. Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye, yes.
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 Ooh, slip back into the I. Okay, we're adjourned. Now, we will move into our RDA meeting. All my other meetings say aye, so it's, it's tough, it's always there, it's always there. Okay, uh, we'd like to welcome everybody to our Riverdale City RDA Board Meeting for Tuesday, June fif, uh, June third, twenty twenty-five. Uh, please let the record show that all members of the board are present, as well as members of city staff. Seeing no uh, public uh, present, we'll skip public comment. There are no presentations or reports. We do have consent items, consideration to approve the meeting minutes from the May twentieth, twenty twenty-five RDA Board Meeting and Work Session. Any questions or comments or changes about those minutes? Seeing none, a motion to approve would be in order.
So moved.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on that? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, those are approved. We will move on to action items. Our first one's a public hearing to receive and consider comments regarding adoption of the final Riverdale RDA budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. And amending the final Riverdale RDA budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Mr. Carden?
Thank you, Mayor. So just as I mentioned earlier, we haven't made any changes to the RDA budget since the tentative. Um, and the only budget amendments, just to reallocate those funds from um, contribution to fund balance up to the land purchase for the hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Any questions on that for him? All right, seeing none, we will need to have a motion to open the public hearing. Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? The public hearing is now open. Seeing no public comment, uh, we need a motion to close the public hearing. Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? The public hearing is now closed. Action item number two, consideration of resolution twenty, R twenty twenty-five dash zero three, amending the Riverdale RDA budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, Mr. Carden.
Um, I don't really have anything to add unless you guys have any questions. It's just as reflected in the packet.
Any questions for Mr. Carden? Board member Arnold?
Move to approve resolution R twenty twenty-five dash oh three as stated within the packet.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Ms. Maragoni, please poll the board.
Mr. Richter?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Senator Arnold?
Yes.
Senator Hanson?
Yes.
Senator Stevens?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. Action item number three, consideration of resolution R twenty twenty-five dash zero four, adopting the Riverdale RDA budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Mr. Carden?
I don't have anything to add unless you have any questions.
Board member Arnold?
Move to approve resolution R twenty twenty-five dash oh four as stated within the packet.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Ms. Maragoni, please poll the board.
Senator Arnold?
Yes.
Senator Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Richter?
Yes.
Senator Hawes?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously, thank you. Any comments for this meeting? Seeing none, we would need a motion to adjourn. Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Favor, say yes.
Yes.
All right, we're, we are adjourned. That was fast for a big old budget meeting.
Well, she can keep somebody under control, we can get things done.